Good evening, everyone. The time is six thirty-two. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Lord, we thank you for another opportunity to come together to do the business of the city. And we thank you for your love and your compassion. And we depend on you for your wisdom and your peace. And we ask for a unified outcome as we go through the budget. And Father God, we just thank you for continually blessing us and keeping us safe. In Jesus' name we bow, citizens, uh, city employees and all who's affiliated with us. And Father, we extend a special prayer, condolences to the families that tragically lost three upcoming young men in our neighboring Upper Mar- Upper Marlboro City. Father God, we ask that you would extend your mercy and your grace and that they will experience your love and your peace at this time. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Roll call. Councilmember Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Here.
Councilwoman Gill.
Here.
Councilman Fareed. Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilman Harry.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis is here. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby adopted. Uh, first on agenda is, uh, on this work session is legislation, uh, resolution to enter into a rental agreement with Fantasy World Entertainment for rides for Glen Arden Day. Are there any questions related to that piece of legislation? Or Councilmember Harry, did you have anything to present to the council?
No, um, the contract should be affixed to the back of it. Um, what is she? It's Glen Arden Day. Uh, and just, and I do want to make sure I add Councilman Gillian's name to the legislation also. He's also on committee. Um, but yeah, it's just the standard contract that we have every year. This year we're gonna try to keep, well, we want to head a ride for the pool event. Last year we just did four hours. This year they gotta give us a deal and then let's keep it for seven hours. Um, so that's the only difference this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, any questions, um, concerns or comments on resolution to contract with, uh, says, says Laros Hospitality for catering services for Glen Arden Day? Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, um, eight thousand dollars is a lot. I didn't look at, I haven't looked at the last years. But, uh, I'm wondering if, uh, are we including the other members of our community, the Hispanic community and the African community when we, uh, do, uh, food, different foods? I had the, uh, pleasure of going to Phyllis Heights and they did, um, for their, um, seventy-fifth anniversary, they had, um, you know, different, for the different, uh, communities that were in, that are a part of the community, those persons were also included in their, in their festivities. And so I'm wondering if we're moving towards doing that also, since we do have a, a large Hispanic, uh, population within the city of Glen Arden. And there's a contingent of, uh, different African, uh, persons in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harry, that you'll respond to that?
Um, basically, we're gonna, we leaving a menu the same as last year. Um, we do reach out to, uh, the Hispanic community because everything we send out is always in Spanish. Um, and a lot of them come out and enjoy themselves every year. Um, so we can look at that maybe for next year, but this year, think so. A lot of times, a lot of other, a lot of other locations tend to have vendors that come out and sell the food. And that's not, I didn't want to do that. Um, as a matter of fact, the contract is only actually seventy-two hundred dollars. Um, I put it at eight, eight thousand because, um, it's getting bigger and I just want to make sure that there's enough in case we gotta increase the number, um, this year. So we're trying to have, um, um, you know, some really good entertainment. I think it's gonna draw a large crowd, so.
Good.
Uh, that's it.
All right. Any other comments before we move forward? All right. Hear none. Uh, we'll move on to our, uh, second part of our budget review. Um, first on the agenda is the Department of Public Works. Let's get there. It's a little bit bigger. And I'll share my screen. All right. Opening up the floor to council members on the budget for the Department of Public Works. Are there any questions, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, thank you, Council President. Looks like they're, uh, they are adding a custodian. Uh, is that, that's for the, gonna be for the inside of the building only?
Mr. Simpson?
Uh, good evening, uh, President. Uh, so primarily, uh, we, we originally wanted to add maybe three positions, uh, but a custodial tech or a technician for the interior dedicated to our building as well as the grounds outside of it immediately is the thought pattern there or, or the reasoning.
Thank you, Council President. That answers my question.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, he's president.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I was looking at deposition also and I guess my question is, do we really need it? Uh, I think they tried it before and found out that it wasn't really needed. Um, there's not that much for them to do. Um, I mean, it might be now, but I think, you know, a lot of times in the winter months, when it seems like things are slow outside, most of the staff is inside anyway. Um, also, I'm looking at the fact that we've took up a lot of, we took a lot of these salaries up and we still have not been through a full year of these increased salaries to see if this, if the budget that we had will sustain these, and these salary increases that we, that we made. Because we made salary increases across the board. So I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about that position being in here. Um, um, you know, so I just think we need to look at that before I add all of these new positions. Since we took up a lot of, took up a lot of salary, um, took up a lot of salary, um, salaries, you know, across the board when we did, uh, salary, um, studying, after the salary study and, and we voted in a new salary, uh, uh, scales. So that's, that's one thing. Um, I guess another question is, why would you need forty-eight hundred dollars under temporary employment?
Um, and Dean can certainly chime in as well for this particular line item. Um, we discussed it today and it was just to be able to provide, uh, an option for temporary appointment i- in the event we needed extra hands. Uh, we know that when we have a vacancy, salary would absorb that. Um, but it was just something, uh, that we, or I should say, along with the treasurer placed in there as an option, uh, when additional hands may or may not be needed. And that, that was the thought process there.
Okay, um, um, repairs and maintenance building that's going up thirty-six thousand dollars? What is that?
Yes, sir. Um, we wanted to definitely account for some electrical repairs. We also have some HVAC work that I know we need to attend to. Uh, I have three garage door repairs that need to be done at fifteen K, uh, as well as an additional garage heater, uh, at the six K. Uh, that, that primarily would jumped that up significantly. Uh, we also wanted to do some bathroom renovations, uh, particularly down in our bathroom, uh, as well as the two employee bathrooms, which we wanted to do primarily in-house uh, and be able to account, uh, for some of that unless of course, uh, council wanted to go another direction with the employee bathrooms and, and our bathroom down there. Um, and those are some of the reasons why that number has increased. And I think it is placed in the details. It's just been highlighted there.
Now, I, I, I thought the employee bathrooms were part of the, uh, part of the, I'm not sure. I, I guess I have to ask Councilman Ferguson or Jones about the, um, dais renovation. I thought those were excluded in that. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. I, I think I was thinking that those were the bathrooms downstairs. Um, I'm particularly referring to the restrooms upstairs in the employee entrance area.
You know, those restrooms up there, what they need to be, oh, you're talking about ones upstairs?
Yes, sir.
They need to be remodeled, refurbished?
Yes, yes.
What you gonna do to them?
Um, some new tile works, new vanity sinks, uh, and exhaust fans would, would, is definitely along the lines of what we were thinking.
Tile work on the floor?
Potentially floor, uh, maybe even the walls, um, just some, some fresh paint, uh, maybe some new tile work there. Yes, sir. We believe we can do a good portion of some of that in-house as needed.
Uh, okay. All right.
Uh, the bathroom partitions also, I believe, are included in that and that's definitely gonna be contracted out.
Do you want needs to be done with the H racks?
Uh, we have one in the nutrition center right now that is not operating. It's on the older system with the R twenty-two. R twenty-two right now is going about two-hundred-and-fifty a pound opposed to the R one-thirty-four refrigerant that's one-twenty-five. And I believe we are past its life expectancy for that one. We're also experiencing some trouble with the HVAC system that services the front administration area as well. Um, we have been doing some server work, service work with it, um, but I'm, I'm sure we're going to need to repair that here in the very near future.
Okay, the one that you say that's doing, that's using R one-twenty-two. Do you say that's for downstairs?
I believe so, but I believe that may be part of the renovation. So we could possibly adjust that number, um, as it relates to that renovation work for the nutrition center and dais area and, and the lower level.
No, I'm, I'm asking because I thought that was, that was, um, thought that was replaced with a new unit uh, before. So when you said R one-twenty-two, I was just like kind of surprised because I think, I thought we had an issue down there before and it was replaced. And I think I need to research that to see.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm again, but, uh, definitely one, if not two of those units are running off of R twenty-two. We have an invoice pending now because we just had it, uh, charged recently, uh, because of some of the malfunction and it appears that there's a major leak on the line. Possibly.
Hmm. Okay, um, guess the other thing is support equipment at, um, thirty-five thousand five hundred? Okay, I'm gonna tell you straight up, every, since I've been on this council, twenty years, every year this number goes up. And every year we're buying weed eaters, mowers, chainsaws, edgers and hedge clippers, blowers. Every year it seems like we're buying the same thing over and over and over again. I'm not understanding why.
Um, I would.
It's a constant, it's a constant.
Yes, sir. Um, I believe just overall usage, uh, we're sort of rotating them out. I think if we go through another two or three, we may have, uh, newer equipment from the last two or three years. Uh, but with the heavy usage during the off-season, um, sometimes there are repairs needed on them. They are just, uh, in need of replacement.
My just don't stand out. I never see them surplus though. That's the whole thing. It's like we're getting new, we're getting new equipment, but I never see them being surplus. It's just like, you don't have them anymore.
Oh, no, no, sir. I can definitely give an account for what's what, and I can get you a list of what we still have, uh, that will be surplus.
I'm just saying every year it's like we're buying the same thing over and over and over again. You know, and I'm, yeah, I just think that, um, you know, that's a lot, um, and but it's going up to thirty-five thousand. What accounts for the bulk of that?
I would say the two snow plow, twelve K and then the three snow, uh, salt spreaders that I'd like to get on the back of the pickup trucks. Uh, one is a replacement and they're larger. Uh, those three spreaders are approximately anywhere from four thousand to five thousand dollars. The salt plow also are just under six thousand or in some cases, uh, six thousand. I think the larger F I fifty was the more expensive one. So the two additional would be just under six thousand, six K.
How many snow plows do we have so far?
We have two snow plows so far.
So you want to get two more?
Yes, sir, for the other two trucks to supplement the snow, um, events that we do have with the contractor.
Um, I got, and the last thing is, um, um, this fuel, twelve thousand five hundred dollars for fuel. How much did you spend last year on fuel? Do you know?
Uh, yes, we just went over that again today. Uh, hold on one second. See if I can pull that number for you. Uh, Dean, I'm not sure if you have had that calculation we went over today.
Yes, can you hear me? Hello? Yes. Okay, good. So for year to, year to date. Well, that's like kind of.
Second. Am I the only one frozen? Is everyone frozen?
No, yeah, no, I, no, we're, we're not frozen. I think maybe you might be the only one frozen.
Okay.
Mr., Mr. Stewart?
I'm coming. Okay, so year to date for and we're talking about the
eighty-six twelve, I believe it is, energy gas expense?
Eighty-six twelve, we have reached nine thousand dollars, eighty-nine forty-six.
As of May?
As of May.
I asked a question. Do you, do you reconcile the gas boy account with the vehicles being filled up?
Yes, we do.
You do?
Yes, yes.
Um, I did, I would do want to ask another question while I'm on this. I noticed this after we left the meeting and, and since we're talking about, um, uh, uh, Mr. Simpson about public works. You had in capital a hundred thousand dollars for a backhoe?
Uh, yes, I, we would like to get a backhoe or a bobcat, uh, to be able to deal with a couple of different things. Uh, one, some of the heavier debris, uh, to be able to excavate some small areas in some of the lots, uh, and lift some of the work that, uh, some of the items that we're doing the day-to-day, um, as far as yard waste and pickup. Uh, and again, backhoe or bobcat, uh, it would definitely help us with some efficiency, uh, and help us to handle some of the other areas, particularly, uh, if we are able to get the salt spreader and snow pile approved. Uh, it'll, it'll help also with loading and unloading some of the heavier equipment and some of the things that we're putting on the dump truck as well.
Cause, um, yeah, I mean, I just, I just, I mean, I just don't see what the purpose of it, we don't barely gonna use a backhoe. I can't see spending a hundred thousand dollars on a backup. Um, I just think that that needs to be looked at again, um, we're spending a lot of money. We still haven't released, this budget really hasn't settled down with the salary increases that we have along with the three percent across the board colas. So, um, that's, that's my final question, Mr. President. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Uh, Councilman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I was wondering if the repairs that Mr. Simpson was listing out before, if those were things that could be covered with, um, ARPA, ARPA funds?
Uh, absolutely.
So, uh, maybe we should move that over and just really look at any other repairs that the, that the city building needs. I don't know how much entire overhaul we're close, but I'm sure it's more than what we have. But, um, if we can use that money for repairs, I think we should try to get as many repairs done as possible.
Thank you, Councilman Fareed. I, I agree if we can, we have excess money from offer use that those funds. That could be a good use. Mr. Stewart, do you have that?
Yes, I do. And we could actually, um, write off some of those expenses to ARPA.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments on the, uh, public works budget? Hear none. We will move on to the administration. Think I passed it on. All right, um, any questions or comments on the administrative budget for twenty-twenty-five? Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, the assistant city manager, I thought that was gonna come out or is that gonna stay in?
Yeah, well, I would prefer it to, to stay in. Uh, per, and this is, it's up to the council. Um, I, I do believe that, um, additional help is needed. Um, and that you know, the, the city manager deals a lot with personnel issues and sometimes don't have additional time to do the projects that we have to do for the city. Uh, so it would be good to have, uh, an assistant on board to help manage um, all the tasks of city manager, but that's, you know.
So may I get an, get an opinion from, uh, Mr. Simpson, since he's been in the position for a minute? Uh, sir, do you feel like, um, you're overwhelmed? You need more, uh, that, that, that position requires more assistance?
Um, I think, uh, i- and this is something that you guys will be getting from me here real so, you real shortly. Uh, sort of the first forty-five days, the first sixty days, uh, with the time I've spent in office. Uh, but I think we can definitely work on maximizing and, um, holding some of our, all of our positions accountable relative to our job descriptions. Um, I think once we're able to identify, uh, or as I have been identifying some of those strengths in some of the areas where we, uh, have opportunities to improve, um, I believe we then can probably, uh, handle, uh, more of the complex as, as well as efficiently deal with some of the projects that have been pending for some time. Um, with that being said, I think a lot of that, uh, is in process now. Um, I think, I think anyone coming into the position is gonna feel relatively, uh, I wanna say, it may be overwhelmed is a bit exaggeration, but it's definitely gonna be challenged, uh, just because we, everyone isn't fully functioning, uh, at, at the level I believe we can relative to their duties and responsibilities. Um, so as that grows and develops, um, depending on what council's initiatives and directives are, uh, aside from what's already been present, um, I think we can have a better determination of, 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 of that. However, uh, I yield to the perspective that you all have as a council and what you've experienced, um, during the time I've been here and even prior to. Uh, so I don't know if that actually answered your question, Councilwoman Jones, but we, we're still in process, process and developing. Uh, I think we're getting there. I think we're gonna be able to be there and actually have some results and some measurable results to show you, uh, what's happened and where we are.
Okay, that, that's understandable that you're, that coming up with, uh, measurements to, uh, present to the council so that we can effectively, um, where's all that noise coming from? Effectively, uh, uh, say yea or nay to what's that? Uh, but the other question is, an assistant city manager, um, where are you gonna put him? Okay.
Are you asking me that question?
I'm asking, yes. I mean, I mean, you're in the building every day. You see the space and, and the areas where, uh, we have folks, um, you know, to effe- effectively and efficiently, uh, bring in another body, um, in that capacity. Cause we already, I think we already have the, um, director of, uh, code enforcement. He's in the conference room right now.
Yeah, there's definitely, uh, in the same discussion and document that I'll be providing. I have some suggestion as it relates to, um, maybe some logistics regarding the office and, and moving some people in some certain, certain spaces. I would say if you guys voted on or decided on an assistant city manager, I believe the space where the executive assistant is will potentially be able to, uh, be shared uh, with the proper furniture and, and maybe, you know, turning and moving some things around. So I think it can be done. Uh, I think it takes some restructuring and, and some thought to go into that. Um, and, and particularly with what you just mentioned with, uh, code enforcement, uh, and moving some things around, uh, in the office, again, being presented to the council, uh, for your, for your approval. Uh, I believe we might be able to successfully, uh, handle, uh, those personnel changes that are suggested in the budget.
Okay, so, cause my vision has always been that whole space where the city manager, the mayor and the executive assistant sit, it probably could be, uh, like refer, re, re, uh, refurbished and re, you know, repositioned to accommodate, uh, for people. You know, and have still enough space where everybody will be able to, uh, freely breathe. But that's one of my visions. It's, uh, I, I, I'm not sure, uh, where the council would like to go with that as far as having that whole space just gutted and, and, and re, you know, I mean, and then we have to think about the logistics of where everybody would go during the renovations. So, uh, that's just a vision that I have. So thank you so much. I see that you're on top of it. Uh, we'll wait to see what you're, uh, what you present to the council as far as, uh, the measurements that you, uh, come up with. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, and I'll also just add the temporary space because with the transition of a council, city manager formal government, there won't be a need for a mayor's office. Um, so that office opens up. So, but Council, Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I wanted to say, um, first I do agree with, um, Mr. Simpson in terms of, you know, I, I've seen it throughout the years that, um, some of the, um, positions are not, um, being worked to their potential. And some of it may be, you know, you know, maybe need some standard operating. And some of it may be, you know, you know, maybe need some standard operating procedures or whatever, but. Um, that I, I've witnessed that as well, um. The other thing is, um, with, um, the executive assistant. Um, I would have thought, you know, that. The, uh, I guess the duties would be a little bit more broad, but I, I could see where it could be brought in, um. Um, considering, um, his, uh, recent, um. Uh, um, masters and then, of course, he did a fellowship in, uh, Annapolis, so I think that, um. We may not be utilizing his skills or either, I don't know exactly whether he's actually, um, working to the potential of his, um. Uh, job description, not necessarily on, um, because of him, but maybe the, uh, task. Are not being presented to him, so I think that's another area to look at. Um, as far as the city manager, I mean, that position, I kinda, um, a little concerned about it, cause I, uh, too feel like. We haven't really had a whole, uh, I would say. Year or have a full circle of, of dealing with all of these, um, the promotions that we, uh, the increases that we, uh, gave. Um, to the employees, which, you know, I'm, wasn't, uh, I am for promotion, but, uh, we just need to make sure we don't, um. Put ourselves out there, we, we need to be able to, uh, maintain, um, that, so, um, I would think that we would just make sure we go full circle. To say, okay, yes, we can handle this and, and, um, I mean, they're still getting their increases, whether it's three percent or five percent or whatever, but, um. I personally, at this time, will, am not for that position, um, being, um. Um, put in the budget. And I, like I said, again, I think that, um, a lot of, some of the, um, administration can come up, um, and more work. Have more responsibility, so to say, um, to, uh, to the executive assistant. Whereas, um, that position can act kinda like a, um, assistant. Uh, more of assistance to the city manager, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Gill, did you have something to say?
No, it's okay, I accidentally unmuted myself.
Okay.
But if, if I am being, but if I am being asked a question, I don't mind having the Assistant City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, let me just say, sitting on this council book as long as I have, I've seen over and over again where we. Bring in positions before we fully realize or utilize the positions that we have. Um, that's a major problem, I think it brings in a, uh, it. It brings it, it demoralizes the, uh, the staff. When you have somebody come in and they're doing all of this work and then you see someone else that may, should be doing it, but they're not, because you got this new person in here. So bringing somebody in to do somebody else's job while the other person doesn't do it is, and I'm not saying that's anything in particular, but I've seen that happen on a number of occasions. Um, again, I think that, uh, the positions need to be first looked at. Um, be made to work to their, to the job description and to the fullest potential, or see if you can realign some of that, uh, work. Because I think you got the staff there to do some of this stuff, you got the expertise there to do some of this, uh, stuff. And then we can see finally if we really, really actually need an Assistant City Manager. Um, again, we're throwing positions out here left and right, and we keep on looking at the budget and we're looking at this ARPA money, this ARPA money is gonna be gone. And then we're gonna be riding on, um, tax revenue. And as everybody noticed, the tax ref, the tax rate just went down because of the constant yield rate. So you're gonna be bringing in less if the, if the housing market. Bal- balloon below again, you know, we could be in a serious situation, putting in all of these positions and somebody may have to end up getting laid off. But I just think that we need to utilize what we have, see where we are, let everything settle down with these salary increases and then look at it. Maybe late, six months down the road and see what's what, um, right now, I don't think we're, we really should be in a position to, to add another position, I think, I think we can do. Do with it, uh, we can get what we need to get with the staff that we have, you know, once they're motivated to do what they need to do. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Any other questions or comments as relates? To, uh, specifically, the Assistant City Manager. Um, I guess we could take a consensus on that, I, I mean. I hear what, um, Vice President Ferguson and Councilman Harren you're saying, um. I, I don't think that we'll need one. I, I don't think we're gonna get an Assistant City Manager on July the first, I, I know this is gonna take some time, uh, but I'm. For me, I'm thinking ahead and, and at least having that position in the budget. Um, whether we'll, uh, staff it at half the amount or half the year or, um. To assess or whether we wanna come back and write it in later on in the, the, after, after the start of the fiscal year. Um, if needed, but, um, that's where I stay, Councilman Gill.
Thank you, Council President, I was going to basically say something very similar. Um, which was going off of what Councilman Herring just stated about revisiting in six months. I would hate for us to revisit in six months and then we realize that we do need an Assistant City Manager and it's not in the budget, right? So, what you just stated is basically what I was going to propose, Council President, which is having it in there. Just in case after we do the assessment, we realize that, okay, we really do need an Assistant City Manager. Then we can move forward knowing that it's already accounted for in the budget, but if it's, if we don't need it, then it'll just be a surplus for next year. Um, so, so, so that's that, and then the, I, I do also wanna say that, one of the reasons why I did say about, um. Why I am not against the Assistant City Manager position is, and also respecting what Council Vice President stated. And also what Councilman Herring stated about utilizing other staff members, I just wanted to, um, say that one of the reasons why I supported. The Assistant City Manager position is because I've heard historically that the city managers. In the past have had more work that they can manage. And so that was my way of saying, well, if they have more work to manage and having them have an Assistant City Manager would offset. That particular situation, but if we're proposing that we're going to look at other folks. And see what, you know, if they're living up to their best potential as far as their roles are concerned, that's fine, but. I would still want this role in the budget, just in case six months down the line. We see that even with people living up to their best potential as far as roles and responsibilities, we're still lacking as far as the support needed for city management. Hope that makes sense.
No, that makes sense, and when you're saying the role in a budget, do you wanna just keep the role, oh, yeah, no, never, I understand, scratch that, makes sense.
Yeah, what you said, but, but half that amount.
Yeah. Uh, Vice President Ferguson, Councilman Harren, are, are you guys? Okay with? Meeting in the middle with, uh, that proposal?
Ms. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, me personally, I just feel that I don't like to hold up any, any money that can be utilized for something else for services, I don't. You know, I, that's just me, I just don't feel right now, we, she needed, I think we should try to utilize what we have. Um, to hold a position when we could be using that eighty thousand dollars for something else, I don't, I don't wanna do that, all right, thanks.
Okay. Alright, so, just so we can have, um, this, I'm sorry, Vice President Ferguson.
Oh, I, I have been changing my stance, I think that, um. I mean, if we can, if, if, if it does come up where we may need it, then maybe we can go into amend the budget and add it in there. But I really, you know, just, um. Just being transparent, um, I think that people need to work at their potential, um, and I, I do believe that, I mean, I've had conversations with, you know. With, um, um, even the, the past, um, city manager and, on suggesting things and it's like, you know, some. People do not like to delegate, they do not, and I feel like sometimes when people do not delegate and put more responsibility on people, they are actually. Um, stunning their growth or, you know, that, you know, allowing them to experience growth within their, um, employment, so I, I just. Clearly believe that, um, from, from my, what I've seen, that many do not work at their potential. Um, and they do the bare minimum, um, and that may not be because of them themselves, but it might be because the work is not being. Um, delegated or the supervisor is not saying, oh, I see more into this person and let me push them. So I am, uh, you know, I keep, you know, I, I, I think this is coming up. Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, let's have a, a quick consensus, um, so, um. The consensus is to take out or leave in at fifty percent. Councilwoman, uh, Gill?
Yes.
No.
I'm gonna say, yes, keep it at fifty percent.
Okay, all right, thanks, um, Councilman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilman Harren?
Uh, no.
Uh, Councilman Jobs?
Uh, yes. Cause once, what, once, once the figures come back, once Mr., uh, Simpson does the assessment, then we'll have better knowledge. Uh, because this is something that they, the administration put in the budget. Um, I, I think we should leave it in, because we're, like you said, we're not gonna staff them tomorrow, so, yes, thank you.
Okay, Council, uh, Member Hairston?
That's nice.
Uh, Vice President Ferguson?
No.
And I'm a yes, um, so we'll keep it in at fifty percent, uh, if we end up not needing it. There'll be a surplus, if we do, it'll be in the budget. Any other comments or questions as it relates to the administration budget?
Council President, I'm sorry, I'm trying, trying to raise my hand and everything at the same time.
No worries, Councilman Jobs, okay, um, the software system for HR.
What, what kinda software system are we putting in?
Awesome, may, uh, Council President, may I?
Uh, yes, Ms. Schultz?
Yes, good evening, um, this is a software that, um, was the former city managers, um. Wanting to have, however, now that the current acting city manager is implementing monday.com. I really don't think that we need this, cause the software was gonna be doing almost identical to what monday.com can do. Which is basically tracking and, and, and that kinda stuff, so I don't think we need that in light of monday.com.
So monday.com is already existing, so we, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So, how much that was, uh? Eight thousand dollars, so we could take out right there? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I had a question about the, um. The increase, um, the HR increase to ninety thousand. And also, um. The election board, um. Fifty thousand dollars, it, does the election board go, and I, I didn't think the election board should be in administration?
Um, Mr. Curtis, can I answer this?
Yes, sir, Ms. Stewart.
Okay, so both for the HR specialists, the increases as a result of moving from. Part-time to full-time, so that's a reason why we have that increase. As it relate to the, um, election board, um. That has always been in the, um, the administration, um, budget. Um, is, the council would want it to move somewhere else, um. We have no problem with that, but it has always been in the administration department.
Okay, well, but is it any, I thought I saw, I might be mistaken, I thought I saw it in, in, um, another, um. Area, or general or. Capital somewhere?
No.
In the, in the first one that I got, maybe, I mean, we've gotten so many, I'm proud to, maybe it was changed, um. Okay, and the other thing back to, um, I don't know whether, you know, if it's been there, um. Then I guess it could stay there, uh, I would look to Mr. Herring to, to, uh, confirm that, um, I don't remember. The last administration, and then, um, back to the HR, so, is that, um, the full-time? Is that a proposed, or is that because I, I've never, uh, I, I think the position is written as a part-time?
It is definitely a proposed, so it's proposed to increase HR specialists from part-time to full-time. And it will increase by twenty-four thousand.
And so. So is this the standard way of presenting, um, a request for someone to increase their? Work, um, hours?
Yes, this is what we're, we're requesting, that the HR specialist. Um, hours be increased, and it is totally up to the council to agree or disagree.
Can I jump in on this question, uh, Vice President Ferguson? Is, is this in conjunction with what you're talking about of people fulfilling their roles? Uh, as a way to possibly cut down on a need for a city manager, cause right now, uh, there are, um, the, the. The HR specialist is part-time, if, if this position was full-time, will that help alleviate? Some of the, the, the pressure on the city manager position?
In, in our opinion, yes, it would, because if you realize anytime we are out of a city manager. Uh, we have to lean heavily on the HR specialist to even do other things. Um, as it relate to care, caring for the, um, the processes of the office.
Ms. Stewart, anything to add?
Yeah, I would definitely concur there, uh, even with, uh, her particular department and as she mentioned with monday.com. And some of the things that we have been, uh, communicating, I believe Michelle's also just recently attended, uh, HR seminar. I believe, uh, if we're able to maximize, uh, the potential and, and work on. Uh, accountability, transparency and communicating these things with the council, yes, I believe this could benefit. Uh, whomever it will be the permanent city manager and certainly me as acting city manager during this time.
Thank you, back over to Vice President Ferguson.
Uh, um, looking at the, um, I would just say, just looking at the bu- budget as it is, it just looked like, um. It was just giving her twenty-four thousand dollar raise opposed to giving her extra four days a month. And I'm just saying, I, I guess for future, um, it wouldn't hurt to even put something parentheses saying propose, um. To, um, full-time or a little bullet down there, uh, or something like that, because it looks like she's just getting a twenty-four thousand dollar raise. And then the other thing is, I, you know, from my experience, um, um, when a position is changed. Or added, is a write-up, I mean, it's, you know, you just, so I, I don't, um. Particularly like the way it was presented, so, um, that's just a side note, so, cause to me, it just looked like. She just getting a promotion opposed to, I don't see why it would, it wouldn't hurt to put, um, opposing to go full-time. Because then there's a PD that has to be written up and everything else or, or amended or something, because. That job was advertised, created and advertised, remember when it was created and advertised as a part-time, so, that's, that, that's not, that's not. And, um, and just to see whether we're agreeing that, um, the election board stays in administration and it's not in no other area. In the budget, that you can confirm that, Mr. Stewart?
Um, the only other area I could think of is the, um, executive, given that they. The executive is responsible for maintaining, um, the election board. So that's the only area in which I think we could move this to.
Oh, okay, I'm done, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson, Councilman Jones?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to verify that the election board has always been under the administration. Um, to put it in any other department, uh, would be, um. Um, to put it in any other department, uh, would be, um, if you have persons running for the office, you wouldn't want them to handle the, the election, um, material or the election machines or anything like to be, uh, I mean, if you have a mayor running, which we probably won't this year, well, whatever. But, um, and put it in the executive, that means they're handling, that would be, to me, um, uh, ethic question, or to put it in, um, move it to, uh, the legislation, that would be an ethics question. But, um, the, the election board has always been under the administration, because eh, even though the election board handles everything, whatever they need, they have to go to the city manager to get uh, information, like, uh, to go for whatever information that they need. They went, the, the last election, they went to the administration. Uh, Leela, uh, I can't think of her name, I think it was, uh, Leela Johnson or, and Mister George, they handled whatever questions the election board had, and, and did the, uh, legwork for them for whatever it is, whatever it was that they needed. But mostly the, the election board handles it, but as a liaison from the city, the administration was the one that did all of the, uh, administrat- eh, any administrative deeds that they needed. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones?
Ms. President, may I?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mary?
Actually, the election board was never under administration until Councilwoman Jones put it under administration. Um, the election board was under general, because the charter says that the city manager haven't, shall not have anything to do with election campaigns or run for office. So it was always under general. Um, and the persons that usually worked with the election board was the council clerk, because she had to do resolutions on behalf of the election board, and also the, um, administrative assistant up front. And it kept the city manager out of it, so that there'd be no, it, no, no appearance of impropriety when it came down to violating the charter with him working, um, on any campaign or serving on any campaign or showing any favoritism to any candidate. That's the way it's always been, it's always been under general. Um, again, like I said, it didn't come out until Councilman Jones decided to take it out and move it to administration under Mister George's advice, or, or, I'm sorry, under Mister George's direction. Um, also, the HR position, uh, is, with, the conversation here is just, is exactly what I'm talking about. Because right now, the treasurer and the city manager, the acting city manager just said that the HR person works a lot more, have a lot more responsibilities when the city manager's not in the office, and that's not the way it's supposed to work. The way it's supposed to work is that the responsibility should roll down to the executive assistant. That's who the person, that's the person that should be the right-hand person, that's why that position was originally created for, um, was originally created, because we didn't have that before, we would need somebody that's gonna be the right-hand man. And that's what, um, and that's why we put that in there. So this is what I'm talking about, having other people do other jobs when they really don't have to, and then bringing other people in to do jobs that should be delegated somewhere else. And again, Mister Simpson said he's gonna work on leveling that. So I think, like I said, again, the HR position, I still don't see the full-time need for it, honestly, I really don't. And I think that we need to, um, maybe go in a closed session and discuss it. Um, honestly. Um, so, yeah, so again, if, if, uh, the vote, election was never in administration, and I've been here twenty years, and I know for twenty years it was in general. Um, cause it didn't need to be under any, uh, any department, because before, remember the mayor was, um, over top of administration, and that's why it wasn't in administration, and she's over top of the executive. She's the CEO, and she's in charge of administration, and we, and we wouldn't put it in, um, legislated because we had council, so we always stuck it in general. And we never, never dealt with anything, it was usually with the, uh, the, uh, chair of the board would reach out to the clerk, or, uh, to let him know what resolutions they needed, the clerk would re- research voting machines, along with, uh, the executive assistant at the front in administration, and that's the way it usually works. So I'm not sure where Councilwoman Jones got this from, but it is true what she just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Council President, I beg to differ with Councilman Herring, what he's saying is untrue concerning me. I don't have, as a councilperson or a council president, I would never have the power to move anything from anywhere. I would have to get the votes from, uh, three other, uh, councilpersons. And Leah Johnson was the person, the executive assistant at that time, she handled all of the stuff for the election board. That's why it was in the administration, because she was the executive assistant. Now, uh, it may have been under general, but I, I, I remember that Ms. Johnson, or she, the executive assistant at that time, she handled all of the stuff concerning the election, as far as the administrative stuff that they needed. The council clerk may have gotten the resolutions, or may have done the resolutions, but I don't remember her doing any resolutions. I remember the resolutions coming from the administration. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Um, so as relates to, um, Councilman Beharing's, uh, request to go in a closed session, we can add that to, um, the agenda for the closed session that we will already have to talk about, um, salaries and discussions, Councilman Beharing, uh, for the time being, we'll sorry, okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, cause I remember last week, we, you also requested, and I knew we were gonna have this meeting this week, so, uh, we'll have a, um, an executive session to discuss, uh, salaries, uh, and, and clueless as, as, uh, an agenda, on the agenda, I'm sorry. Um.
Ms. President, may I ask, I would like to ask that the, uh, election board be moved under general, to avoid any appearance of impropriety when it comes down to the city manager or anybody else? That it just be moved generally, it used to be.
Alright, any objection to that? Hearing none, uh, Mister Simpson, Mister Stewart, if we could move that to, to the general fund?
My pleasure. Wend off, yes.
Alright, any other questions? As relates to the, um, administrative budget? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the legislative budget. Alright, uh, we'll start off with Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you, Council President. Um, can we go to the special event? Yeah, that line item is also supposed to be inclusive of the money that we've set aside per, uh, by resolution for the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, the track team, hold on, I'm pulling up the resolution. Um, resolution forty, twenty-twenty-three. We have, um, starting with last fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, we're supposed to put in a minimum of twenty-five hundred dollars to the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club, and twenty-five hundred dollars to the Glen Arden Track Club in that line item, so it should be specified. It should be part of community outreach, but I want it to be specified, so we don't end up using that money for something else.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, can you, um, make note of that, please, and specify those two line items?
Yes, I have it.
Outreach, is there a line for outreach? I remember there being a line for outreach before.
Well, it's the same, uh, budget number, so it must not have, it must not have been a separate line item, but we should be calling it out.
Okay. Alright.
And, and, uh, we, per resolution, it was a minimum of twenty-five hundred dollars. So do we wanna keep that at twenty-five hundred dollars for this year, or do we wanna raise that? I think when we were discussing the ARPA funds last week, someone made a comment about, uh, there being a, a particular need this year, and if we can increase it, I, I suggest that we increase it.
Um, I, I, I mean, I'm willing to, to accept any recommendations, or hear any recommendations, if there are any. Uh, Council Miguel?
No, I wasn't responding to what Councilwoman Fareed was saying, I, so if the, if you're asking me, like, you're willing to hear recommendations, I don't wanna respond to that, because I don't know what the will of the council is, I was, I had my hand up for something else in regards to what's on the screen, so you tell me, Council President.
I'll come back to you. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed, is there a recommendation?
Um, I, I would say that we take it up to five thousand for each of them, for this year.
Any, any opposition to taking it up to five thousand dollars?
Uh, yeah, Ms. President, yeah, I, I do, cause I think, I think we're looking at other scholarship programs for the kids in this community, we're looking at, we just talked about a quarter of a million for that. And there's other programs that I would like to institute in this community before we start doling it out. If we do twenty-five hundred, we are committed to twenty-five hundred. I think we should stick there to see what, what is left over, before we increase it for outside organizations. Um, so I, I do have a problem with that, cause there's other things that I would like to see done with some of the ARPA money also. Um, a pro, program that I wanna bring up, I don't know how much is gonna be left. Um, you know, it is only five thousand, I, I do have a problem with that, so. I mean, if we have something left over, yeah, let's do it, then. Um, but now, before we finish the budget and go through everything, and settle everything, I think we should keep it at twenty-five minimum, until we see if we got any more we can add to it. Thank you.
Alright, um, so let's just do a consensus, and then we can move on. Uh, the consensus is to move, yes, to move up to five thousand, no, to stay at twenty-five hundred. Again, the consensus is yes, to move up to five thousand, and no, to stay at twenty-five hundred. Uh, Councilwoman Gion? Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Um, I'm gonna definitely say yes, but I also want to point out that this is an increase of five thousand dollars, and as of our discussion last week regarding the ARPA funds, it was still approximately three million dollars to be spent. So I don't know that five thousand dollars is an amount that we, we can't afford to, um, offer to each organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
I'm staying.
Council, uh, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, abstaining also.
Um, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I just need clarity, so is the money, uh, coming from the ARPA money, or?
So, the money is coming out of, uh, the legislative budget, I think the comment was being made was that we are doing other things in the community, and we wanna see if there's, um, make sure that there's enough money for that, and what I'm saying is that I believe there should be enough money, we said we had three million dollars left to spend. So I don't know that giving
It's coming from the legislative budget versus the
Right, so the legislative budget, increasing that by, um, five thousand dollars really has, I think, no bearing on the fact that we're, um, giving money to other organizations and other initiatives through the ARPA money, because it's, that's three million dollars, like, we're definitely gonna have enough money to do the things that we wanna do over there.
Okay, the next question I have, I'm just trying to understand, I thought that, okay, so the twenty-five hundred was, um, and I think you might have mentioned that last time, cause I think it was the, the, uh, the mayor that mentioned the increase, but, um, it was a, it was done by a resolution, um, and you said it was twenty-five hundred every year, so.
The res- the resolution is twenty-five hundred dollars, a minimum of twenty-five hundred dollars will be allocated each. So each year, we could decide to give more than twenty-five hundred. If we wanted to, but at a, at a minimum, it would be twenty-five hundred. Yeah, each fiscal year, beginning with fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, a minimum of two thousand five hundred dollars will be allocated each to the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club and the Glen Arden Track Club.
Oh, okay. Um, I pass, I'm, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, you're saying it comes from the legislative, um, department, we have some other, uh, I would say go midway three hundred, three thousand, but, um, I, that's not on the table, so I would have to pass.
But, sorry, you're passing or abstaining?
I, I abstain.
You abstain? Okay, um, oh, it's my vote. My vote is, um, my vote is to say yes, to make it available, um, contingent upon, um, them actually needing it, which I can't foresee them not needing it, but yes, I'd just say yes. Um, and the only person that passed was
Me.
Councilwoman Gion?
I'm sorry?
I wanna change my vote. On my consensus.
Okay, um, well, let me go to Councilwoman Gion, but then I come back to you, Vice President Ferguson.
Yeah, my vote is a yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
I was gonna say yes.
Okay. Alright. So move it to, um, to, uh, increase it by five thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm, so, um, and we also just need to, uh, call that, enumerate that in the comment that five thousand is going to to organizations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. President, may I, right quick?
Uh, r- r- real quickly, cause the Councilwoman Gion's next.
Yeah, I know, but I just, in, it's in the same vein, which I thought, I think, I think the best idea would be to move it to like awards, so that way it's singled out, and it won't get mixed up with spending for special events, cause technically it's not a special event, it's more of an award. I think we should move it to the awards line, so that, so that you know what's there, you know it needs to be spent, and that's what it's for. Then just, you know, in the description, put what it's for.
I agree.
Alright, thank you.
Any opposition to that? Alright, Mr. Stewart, Mister Simpson, if they can move to, uh, the awards line, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, the only thing I need to know is, do we need to make an amendment to the resolution, cause the resolution is calling out this line in particular?
I don't think so.
I would, if we're gonna leave it at five thousand.
Well, we're not cha- sorry, we're not changing it at five thousand permanently.
Okay, that's right, that's right, the resolution says twenty-five hundred or more.
Right.
Okay, so then every, I guess, then, eh, if we're gonna leave it at the resolution, then um, every year, uh, that it's, if it's brought up again to, to, to hire it, or lower it, uh, then we'll just, twenty-five hundred is just a minimum.
Yeah, and I think what I need to get clarification from, um, the treasurer is, I think when we did this resolution, that line item, that account code was just for community outreach. But I think since then, it's been combined, and that is a special events. So that's why we see all these other things there, community outreach is just kind of a note at the end. Because in the resolution, we referenced this account code and the, uh, account name as community outreach.
Yeah, but, I, and I, I respect that we can hear from Mister Stewart, but I think that this ordinance will trump that, to move it to, um, the awards line with the passing of the budget, but Mister Stewart?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, why would we move it to awards if it's supposed to go, if there's supposed to be a line item for community outreach?
Oh, okay, I got you, thank you.
Yeah.
Mister Stewart?
I would recommend that we, um, do the resolution to change it from, um, special event to awards and certificates.
Is there a separate line item for, for outreach?
Uh, the out- outreach is actually in, um, let me see, outreach is actually in special events. But I really don't have, yeah.
Right, and what I'm saying is, I think there may have been a change, because when we did the resolution, that line at ten dot thirty dot ten dot eight six four seven was community outreach, it wasn't special events. Community outreach was its own i- line item. Community outreach was its own i- line item. And I do think community outreach should be a separate line item from events or and from awards. Most importantly, what I'm finding is sure that when, even if we did uh twenty-five hundred dollars, that that money can't be used for something else. If we put it in a broader category like award. I I think there would be the possibility that we could end up not um using some of the money for awards and not for community outreach. Is there a problem with it being its own line item?
Mr. Stewart, is there, is there, is is there an issue with um separating out community outreach? Um.
No, there is no, there's no issue with that. Um, although I think it being with the other events would be um reasonable.
Yeah, I, so I I'm I'm also in agreement that should be in a separate line. I'm fine with it being in awards and having in a line item awards, five thousand dollars for um for each the the track and um whatever else, so it cannot be used for anything else. Um. But I mean, I'll I'll, you know, um, yield to Councilwoman Fareed this. I know you sponsored this, uh, you were one of the sponsors on this legislation, so I'll I'll yield to to the sponsors to see if you guys. And if you guys want a separate line item, I'm I I have no.
Well, I don't want to bela- I don't want to belabor the point. I think the point that I'm just making is that if it stays where it's at right now in special events, it needs to say more than community outreach in that note section. It needs to say community outreach and specifically how much is going to um each of the organizations, just as we do for the other events here, so that we know specifically how much money is going towards them, because right now it just says community outreach and we have no idea. There's no specification of what that's for. My preference would be, because this is something that's going to be enduring in our budget every year, that we have a line item specifically for.
Okay, and and are you are you opposed to moving it to awards to separate it?
My concern would be the same as it being with community events. So my my preference would be it it's online, so that there's no opportunity to use that money for anything other than both two things.
Okay. Oh, what? Oh, I'm sorry. One second. Um, thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Uh, the first person I heard was Mr. uh Councilmember uh Harry.
Yeah, once you put it in awards and you and you put in that in the details that it's for Glenon Track Club, Glenon Boys and Girls Club, five thousand dollars for Glenon Track Club, five thousand dollars for Glenon um Boys and Girls Club. And this is voted on, that's the law. That's the only thing that can be split, it can be spent on. So you can't put it on its own line and just the details is what's gonna tell you what what it needs to be spent on, and that's that's the only thing that it can be spent on. So breaking it out into awards and just giving it that detail, that's one of the things where our budget is so detailed oriented. You normally, once these lines are drawn, that's usually all you can spend this money on, was in the detail. So once you do awards and then just do five thousand dollars for Glenon Track Club, five thousand dollars for Glenon Boys and Girls Club, total ten thousand dollars, um, that's it. Also, council, the council president was right. Once we vote on this budget, it it trumps the ordinance. Where we put it is where we put it. We don't have to, we don't have to redo the resolution. The resolution just said the the intent was to do uh 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 an award for the groups. And how much it's gonna be, but now that we're gonna move it and we're gonna spend the money from somewhere else, we can, we don't have to. The resolution doesn't trump the ordinance. The ordinance trumps the resolution, so we don't have to revisit the or revisit the resolution, even if we put it in a different line item. So um that's it. Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, and Council Jones, only if it's on the same topic.
And it is.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with with Councilwoman Fareed, and I think that it should be a a line item on its own, community outreach, because that's exactly what it is. Yes, it is an award, but this is employee incentives and other awards. And I just don't want to see that get mixed up in in something and then uh I understand with the the uh ordinance being uh law, once we pass it, but I would like to see that as community outreach also.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart, could you create a a separate line for community outreach?
Will do.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to sustain the special events line item. I'd like to, number one, add something to that line item. And secondly, would like to request an increase in the other. Um, so first things first, this year, this November is gonna make ten years since the Veterans Memorial was um constructed or brought into um Glen Arden. So I would like to have a so uh an event in recognition of that. And we all know how beautiful the Veterans Memorial is and how much attention we get. That's positive as as it being one of the most beautiful veteran memorials out there. For that, I would, similar to looking at the Thanksgiving Meals line item, I would want, just in case there's any questions, I just want to put everything out there from now. I would like to request at minimum six thousand dollars. I may need to amend, because I don't know if we'll have to, depending on the weather, if it'll be um, you know, how much tents or things of that nature will be required. But I would like to add um a Veterans Memorial Anniversary Event there. Um, the second thing that I would like to say is, for almost two years now, Council Vice President and I have been advocating for an increase for the Christmas party. I will let Council Vice President speak for herself. But for me, thirteen thousand is way too low. We kept, we keep nickeling and diming our vendors. And the vendors are always coming back with a discount, but enough is enough, because there's a discount and there's them not even getting paid really. So I would like to increase that amount. Thirteen thousand five six six is not realistic. I would like to increase that amount to twenty-five thousand. Not sure what Council Vice President has to say, but I know that behind the scenes, we do a lot of negotiating and it's a lot. And I just want that number to be changed. So that's me. That's all I had to say.
And thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gill. Vice President Ferguson, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I concur with everything um, Councilwoman Gill said. Um, we have definitely been nickel and diamond on some of our, uh, I mean, they were glad to do it, but I think enough is enough. We need to pay them. Um, probably can't pay them for their worth, but just pay them, you know, what they would normally charge. And um I concur with that, um, the dollar amount increase as well. Thank you.
All right. And um, Councilman Jones?
Uh, I have one question concerning the uh Veterans Memorial Anniversary Event. Would that be on, would would that event be held on Veterans Day, or would that be a separate day? And then how much money are we talking about allocating to that uh uh event?
So right now, wh- so as I did my due diligence, right now, I'm thinking it will be due, it will be on Veterans Day. Um, but it will be a separate reception. So in my mind, it would be the folks who actually brought it into fruition. So inviting the former mayor, who actually signed off on that, um, inviting um states, I forget what his, Anthony Brown. I'm sorry for not knowing his title at the very moment, but um all the diff- all the folks, whether it was citizens or folks who are council members, who played a part in bringing it into fruition, there there would be the ones that would be recognized. And the the special reception will be held in their honor. So it would either be um after, like same day but after, or same day before.
Okay, so we're gonna be serving food and um and it'll be in the go room. That's what you're saying?
No, it'll depend, it'll be a tent. Again, I don't know.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's why I said at minimum six thousand, because I would have to look at logistics to make sure um how it will be handled.
Okay. All right, that, and you said six thousand is, you want to put it in a tent and that will, that should take care of any caterers or any uh other.
Right, I'm correct. I'm not looking for, you know, a three-course meal here.
Right, right, right.
I'm looking at more like pat, like a, if if you usually, I hate for how this sounds, but if you usually go to like funerals, sometimes you see like this, like pass orders or pass this or pass that, like light food, but it's more programmed in honor of the folks who brought it into fruition.
Okay, like a luncheon. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
This was to, yeah, so um for Glenon Day, I know it's at thirty-four. Um, this year it looked like it's gonna be even bigger than it was last year, and and of course, um, the food went up. Um, rides are gonna be a little bit longer, so I would like to increase that to like fifty. Um, to cover the uh event right now. I don't think we're gonna spend all of that, but I just want to make sure we have a cushion. Um, again, like I said, I mean, just every year it seems like it gets bigger. Last year, I mean, the year before that, it was five hundred. Last year, we did six hundred. We think we'll probably get about seven hundred this year. Um, and I think we need to have that go up a little bit um to like fifty thousand. And work on something else also, so um I'd like to take that up. Um. Another thing is, um, the chairs in our conference room. We need to replace those chairs. I don't know if anybody's been in there and sat on those chairs, but they're killing. And um I asked the clerk to get a cost estimate on the chairs, and those chairs ran about two fifty a piece. So I would like to get like twenty-five hundred dollars to cover new chairs. Also, I talked to the clerk, and she is, of course, she, I mean, I mean, as I know that, you know, the city paid for her uh to be a notary. And so she says she's doing, she's notarizing people. She notarized two people this year. But she says she, what she would like to have is a revenue line, because she would like to turn the revenue in- into the city, since the city paid for the notary. So anytime anybody she notarizes that pays, she wants to be able to have a line item to turn the money into to into them. Uh, I mean, into the city. So that's something that we can consider. Um, and that's it.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, Councilman Harry, you said the chairs in the conference room? Because I know.
In our con- in our conference room.
Oh, yeah, okay, definitely, because that was, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, horrible. Um, and even, yeah, we need to get um new chairs, but they're peeling and things like that. Okay, I thought you were talking about the conference room across from us.
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Councilman Jones?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, Councilman Harry mentioned notarizing. I I know uh Ms. Ward does uh notarizing too. How how is that handled? Uh, what is, what is the protocol for that? Is she?
I think. Well, I think since she had hers when she came on board, when she notarizes, she just, you know, she charges them what, you know, what the fee is, but I think it's six dollars. So she keeps that, but the clerk says she just felt that since the city paid for it, it was like a hundred and something dollars, she would like to turn that money back into the city. When she notarize for people. So I I think Ms. Ward, I I I think, I'm not sure, you know, she 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 had hers before she came, so she's doing a service that she paid for out of her pocket.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Um, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, if we're done with that, um, about another event. Councilman, uh, councilmembers, uh, Fareed and Gill, are you all planning to, you're definitely planning to back to school and um vaccination program event?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't let council, I didn't let Councilwoman Fareed respond for herself, so I'm responding for myself.
Yes, it's still the same.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stewart and Mr. Simpson, are you keeping notes of all this stuff?
Yes, I I am trying to follow. Um, but let's see if we could, I try to repeat some of them. So for the Christmas party, how much are we saying that we're gonna move that up to?
She said twenty.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Council President. I'll, I thought.
No, no, go ahead.
No, no, please respond. No, I mean, sorry, Council President, just please respond.
Yeah, uh, she, uh, Councilwoman Gill said twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Councilman Harry said.
Fifty thousand, right?
For Glen Arden.
Right.
And Councilwoman Gill also says six thousand for the special uh ceremony for the veteran.
Yes, and for the Boys and Girls Club, it's five thousand each, but we're moving that to a separate line.
Called outreach.
Called outreach, yes, outreach. Um, then the equipment, the chairs, we're gonna be increasing to twenty-five hundred instead of sixteen hundred?
Uh, yes.
Great, great. Got it now.
Okay, um, I think I saw Councilman Harry take his mute off first, and then Councilman Johnson, I'll come to you.
Yes, um, one thing I've noticed in it here, it says, is that expungement nine hundred dollars? Because that is way.
Yes, that's what we have there.
Yeah, that needs to be. That was just what I paid for the uh, paid for the sponges at the court. That don't, that don't cover the uh, the food and um the uh gift cards and all that, and other other items. So I might have looked at how much it actually, we actually spent on that event. It was more than nine hundred dollars. I do know that.
Okay. Okay, just hold a second, Mr. Herring. I'm just pulling up the last report that I sent out. Um, with, let me see, expungement, um. We had budgeted like four thousand the last time, but we only spent nine hundred.
Oh, no, we spent more than nine hundred. I forgot. Could we bought, could we, could we bought lunch? Um, we had gift cards. We had, um. Yeah, it was more than, I spent nine hundred dollars, covered, nine hundred dollars only covered the expungements at the courthouse.
I see. Okay, so um, yes, we could, it's okay to move it up. Uh, I just need to get um more explanation whenever the expenditures are coming in. That way I could allocate to the right place, because if you're saying it is more than nine, then um I need more information. All right?
Okay, I I'll see what I got and send it to you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, um, another thing, um, Mr. President, is the mailing, council's uh. What was it? Um, mailers, we had thirteen thousand. They took it down to seventy-one hundred. I think they need to go back up for the mailers, because we do, we we're doing more mailers with all of these events we have, we're doing more mailings. And I think that needs to go right back up to thirteen thousand to cover all the mailings that we've done, because I, and from understanding, I think we just. Uh, Mrs. Simpson, don't, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we just give a number of invoices for mailings?
Um. Yes, we, we just got some mailing, but didn't we um agree to put it in general operations?
No, we, that's why we took up the council mailing, the council mailing line to cover that, because general operations was, you'll eat it, I mean, we'll get it up. We wanted to make sure that there was money gonna be in there, so we don't have to go in conflict with our administrations now.
I see. Okay, so I'll add that up then.
Yeah, just wanna make sure it's in there, so that you can, you know, when we had these events, that we can mail out stuff and we don't have to lag for funding for mailing.
Okay, sounds reasonable.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. There was a um, an event on the calendar in August, I think. Is it the tenth or the seventeenth? Um, uh, Women in Leadership, is that some, is that something that the council is doing? The Women in Leadership event, is anybody?
So Council, President Joe, I mean, Councilwoman Jones, I'll let Council Fareed speak to that. The answer is yes. Councilwoman Fareed, if you can?
Yes, that is something that the council is doing, but actually, given everything that's happening with the special. Yes, that is something that the council is doing, but actually, given everything that's happening with the special election on August sixth, I was going to propose that we hold this event actually during Women's History Month, because we're gonna have a lot going on after this special election for the county council seat at large, depending on who wins. That may figure another election for a, you know, for our district, uh, if Jillina wins. Um, and then we're also going to have potentially uh some, some of the county council running for offer book seat when, if she gets elected to the senate. I feel like there's just so much movement happening in this fall time area that we should just wait until all the justice settles and everyone's in their roles and then have that event. Welcome, any thoughts on it?
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Uh, I have one comment as relates to the um conference and training line. Why the increase by two thousand dollars? If, if, if each customer gets five thousand, what's the extra two thousand? Well, in your position to remove that two thousand, how about that? Because it is our budget. Here now, we could take that back down to thirty-five thousand, because uh the council clerk already has their own line. So I don't understand what two thousand was for. Um, Vice President Ferguson.
Starting the event that this was um discussed, so postponed, I understand, but uh did you wanna put, I don't, unless I'm miss, missing it, did you wanna put it in the budget? Councilwoman Fareed.
I'm sorry, ask me the question again. Yes, so Councilwoman Fareed, what Council Vice President asked was, although it's being postponed, did we still want to put it in the budget?
Yes, it's not in the budget?
No, I don't see it, unless I'm missing it.
I forgot how much we asked for it, for. I will have to go back to that. Um I I think we've asked for ten thousand. For um approximately, there would be about a hundred people attending. And that costs for the caterer. Sorry, I'm in a loud place. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I I I wouldn't know. I'll have to lean on you and Count, um, Councilwoman Guillaume on what the proposal was.
Yeah, sorry, that, that was the amount, and that was for the um, the caterers, uh, social catering um, that we were budgeting for, but I guess what I'm asking is, do, do you all think we should budget more than, than that? Um, because the idea was to sell tickets to it to offset some of the cost. Forgot to add that element.
Mr. Curtis.
All right, uh, Mr. Stewart. Well, I'm sorry, one second. Um, uh, Councilwoman Fareed, if you could push uh yourself on mute, it's kind of hard to hear. Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Yes, could you just reiterate what event this we're debating?
It is, I'm sorry.
A Women in Leadership Luncheon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Women in Leadership Function. All right, I mean I'm, I think ten thousand is fine. Anybody else can chime in on it, um. It'll be good to look at all this together, because we had, um without the additions, we are at a hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, we have some, you know, pretty substantial additions. Uh, I'm comfortable with the, you know, ten thousand dollars every the first year. You know, I'm not necessarily comfortable with selling tickets to the event. I think that Women in Leadership is a, is a, it's a great event. Um, I'm more so on the side of, um praising our women in leadership and having that be a free event for people to come to, to participate, and I don't want to limit it by selling tickets to it. Uh, but that's my personal opinion. But as it relates to the amount that we allocate to it, I I would like to cap it at ten thousand dollars um for the first year, and then we can see how it goes. Um, and then come back to it next year, but our price tag on special events is getting pretty hefty. Who else wanna, I mean, I'm not the only. That's just my thoughts and opinions. If anybody else have anything different, please feel free to uh chime in.
Well, I don't, I don't want it to be janky, so I think, you know, we need to have decor and those types of elements, and that was what I was suggesting that the um that we be able to offset the cost with, as well as raising money for, excuse me, the um scholarship fund that we wanted to establish, so the, those tickets would be um tax deductible contributions for the scholarships. Um, so I I think that, you know, if we're, if we're not gonna charge, then we need to raise that, because ten thousand dollars will really only cover food.
Can, can we meet and just offset it with some ARCA funds? And and so therefore we'll have a full year where we're going to see how much it costs, allocate some money from ARCA funds to offset anything that's additional, then going into twenty-twenty-six, have understanding of what the full cost will be, and then be able to go from that. Um, is that a I don't want it to be janky. But we do have extra ARCA funds that can support an event like this.
Can we use them for that? If we can use it for that. You know, I thought, I thought everything kind of had to be going back to community. Yeah, the impact and um the impact uh from COVID.
I read it, it's been a long time since I read that. But that's fine. I I mean, however the council decides to go about it, I'm fine with it. I just want to be mindful of costs going up. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yeah, I think the cost is is getting steep too, but um these event, each event, I'm, I'm thinking that isn't a budget submitted to the treasurer as to what monies was actually spent for each one of the events, so that he'll, you know, have an actual, I'm sure he has actuals on on uh, he should have actuals on events, so that we'll know, okay, last year we spent, because we just uh pushed up Glenn Arden Day to fifty thousand dollars. And uh, in, in the beginning, it was at thirty-four, that's an additional maybe sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, can we justify pushing that up to another sixteen thousand dollars? You know, I mean, what, I mean, what are we doing? What are we presenting to um justify the figures that we're doing, and 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 not just Glenn Arden Day, but any of the, the events. The new events, of course, we don't know where they're gonna go. But um, the ones that we just pushed up, like the, the Glenn Arden Day for sixteen thousand, uh, maybe the Christmas party that was pushed up to twenty-five thousand. You know, I have no issue with, with that, you know, for what we want to do to make sure that we do pay vendors and we don't have to nickel and dime people and and be uh, um asking for favors, but um, we need to be able to, when we bring these things to the table, I think we should be able to justify this is why we need, just like the, the expungement, uh, the, the uh treasurer has in here nine hundred dollars, and it came back to say, uh, no, we didn't spend just, we spent more than nine hundred dollars. Where was the budget to let the treasurer know that there was money spent on gift cards, there was money spent on food? I I just think that we need to have a, a, a clear uh, a budget from the previous, from the previous event to say, okay, this is what we did, this is what we spent. So this year, because of inflation, or well, we need to maybe take this up another five thousand or another uh, 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 three thousand or two thousand. And uh, because, you know, it, the special events line for the, for the legislation is uh, we, we're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna get this money from, but once the treasurer puts it together and presents it to us, we'll, we'll see what um, where, where it goes. Thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you. Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I would like to say that I did submit um a report to the um uh, to Mr. Stewart, and um, uh, he's actually, um I think what he reported or put into the budget was um, actuals. But like, like we said, um, we have substantial, um discounts. I mean, I think it was almost like thirty-two hundred for the um, or at least three thousand, I would say. A discount for the um a caterer, and I, I don't, you know, it's quite a bit for the, for the person that was doing the decor, quite a bit. So, I mean, I can even say, even if I even say nine thousand dollars, or eight, between eight, eight, eighty-five hundred discounts. Um, even if we, you know, double that, and then, then the rest is like a cushion, so, I mean, I'd rather have it than not to have it, and, and again, I do not want to, um, going to uh, another year. Especially with the person that's doing the, um, um, the core. Um, she pretty much gave us things, literally, and she needs to be paid this third year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all right, so let's, you know, have everything put together, uh, and brought back to the council, and we'll see what the uh outcomes are. Um, the only other thing was, um oh, Councilwoman Fareed, you said it should be more than ten thousand, but I didn't, don't think I heard the amount that you were trying to increase it to.
I think fifteen would be good.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Behary?
Yeah, um, I, uh, uh, Councilman Harrison and myself, I actually do have another event that should be coming up August the nineteenth, I think it is, or August the seventeenth, one of them days. Um, it's on a Saturday, it's a senior expo. Um, I don't think I need any money for it. Uh, the person that's, we're sponsoring it with is gonna basically do everything and provide this uh, the food. I think we just gotta provide the gold, and maybe shuttle service for the bus. I don't think I need anything. I was gonna ask for something, but I, I'll just be, I'll, we'll try to wing it. I'll wing it. Uh, but uh, Glenn Arden Day actually do have a running budget for Glenn Arden Day, and we actually had about forty thousand right now, based on all the numbers that we have so far, and uh, as um, Councilwoman and uh, uh um, Ferguson and Councilwoman Guillaume say, you know, we've been, if you have, you have even nickel and dime with these caterers, the caterer's been giving us breaks. Um, and you know, the, the event has got, has been getting bigger. You know, and maybe this is the last year we can, you know, spend this kind of money on it, but again, this is also our last year in office, if we decide not to run, or I'll, or this council's term is the last Glenn Arden Day for this term, so um we do have a running budget, and I can just, all the numbers that I have so far, and why it needs to go up. Before, we would, we always would give donations, we would get a nice donation from First Baptist Church of Glanville, and we haven't gotten that in a couple of years. You know, so of course, that used, that used to be about five thousand dollars, so we gotta absorb that cost. You know, again, and food has gone up, and um, you know, the rides, and um, everything has gone up, as for that matter, so I do keep a running total, and we do have a running budget for Glenn Arden Day, so like I said, again, we are at about forty thousand dollars, and hoping I don't have to go over, I don't think I will go over fifty thousand. I think what we have now, I can, we can squeeze out another five K to get everything done. Maybe a little five thousand dollar cushion if, if, if need be, so. Yeah, so it isn't like we're just spending willy-nilly and just saying we need this money just because. I'm, I'm looking at the numbers closely, we've been, we've been pitching, we've been pinching pennies ever since we've been doing Glenn Arden Day, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, um, uh, Councilman Herring, I, I, I believe August seventeenth is the back to school drive. I don't have my uh, calendar in front of me, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the date. If you're saying you're also doing an event.
On a Saturday? Oh, no, I'm sorry, is it a Wednesday? This is Saturday, okay, I'm sorry, it's on a, mine is on a Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
Mine is, oh, mine is on the twenty-first, sorry, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You said, you said, what was on seventeenth?
The back to school event.
Okay, you do know we had an expansion scheduled for that day. Think we're gonna cancel it, though.
Is the council clerk here? I don't know. What, I don't know what date we said, it's in the newsletter, somebody has access to it, the date of the back to school event. I'm pretty sure it's August seventeenth.
I do, just a second.
Okay, thank you.
While waiting on Councilwoman Jones, uh, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I, this is in regards to the veterans um, event that I talked about. I wanted to ask um, Acting City Manager Simpson a question, but if he can go into his public works hat for a second. Um, so when I mentioned tents, I didn't realize that it could be very cold in November, so we do not have those heavy-duty tents, right? We just have the standard tents that can just do the general covering if it's raining. Okay, so if that's the case, I would propose, I mean, just in your, so Acting City Manager Simpson, what I was envisioning was six thousand dollars, because I was envisioning like, okay, it's not gonna be that cold, not realizing that it's November. So knowing that with what I had originally stated, it was six thousand, if I were to get a more heavy-duty tent, like how much of a difference would that be?
Uh, are you talking about the enclosed?
Yeah.
Heavy-duty tent? Give me a moment, I, I can try to get, get a couple of numbers for you.
Yeah, and I know, and I wasn't expecting for you to answer, like, at this very second right now, you knew what I was going to ask you. But I was just, again, going to what, I guess similar to what my other colleagues have been doing is I'd rather have a cushion than to just go over budget, right? So if it's six thousand, just based on me thinking it was just a regular tent and some catering of sorts and, and modest programming, I would not want to go over budget if the tent itself is more expensive, because I was banking on our, our tents, not renting the heavy-duty ones. And while, and while Mr. Simpson is looking at that, I just want to echo what, everything that Council Vice President stated, and also what um, Councilman Herring stated as well, is a lot of the folks that we have been doing business with for the, whether it's for the holiday party, or even Glenn Arden Day, as I'm part of the, both of those committees, a lot of them are small business owners, and adding an additional layer to that, it's small business owners who are of color. And I feel more often than not, they are the ones that always get shortchanged as far as, can you please give us a discount? Can you please give us a discount, when they are already trying to sustain within themselves? So um, the twenty-five thousand dollars, it wasn't an arbitrary number that was thrown out there for a Christmas party, because I know firsthand how much anguish both Council Vice President Ferguson and I have when we are talking to the caterers, to the decorators, and to other vendors, the DJs, everything else, and everyone in between. So, Council President, just in the interest of time, while Mr. Simpson is looking for that, do you want to move forward? Because I don't want to hold up, but if, if, it, it may just be like no more than seventy-five hundred, if that's okay? Um, since it was six thousand originally, just say seventy-five hundred, I think it's gonna be less, but if we want to just do that for both you and Mr. Stewart, Council President, you tell me.
Um, oh, well, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have an idea of how many tents? Did I miss that? Or we?
I'll probably just want one big, just one, one big tent.
One big ten by twenty, okay, I mean, one more.
Okay, and Mr. Councilwoman Guillaume, you, you're saying just for the sake of time, just increase it from six thousand to seventy-five hundred?
Yes, and it might end up being less, but just to be on the safe side, depending what Mr. Simpson comes up with, because I was thinking about the enclosures.
Okay, I, I think that's fine, because we're gonna come back to this anyway, so Mr. Simpson, Mr. Stewart? If we just go up to seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yeah, for the calendar for August, August sixth is National Night Out. August tenth is the proposed Women in Leadership Luncheon, which uh, Councilwoman Fareed, I think she said she's gonna postpone. And then August seventeenth on a Saturday is the back to school event, and then August twenty-first is the seniors uh expo. That's Wednesday.
Okay.
That's what's on the calendar right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Simpson? You have your hand up?
No, I'm sorry. That is old hand.
Okay. And Councilman Fareed, I'm gonna guess that's the old hand, too. Mr. Stewart?
Okay, thank you, uh, President Curtis. Uh, Mr. Um, Mr. Herring, the expungement, how much you had said that you would like it to go up to? Because I still have nine hundred. How much you are thinking of bringing it to?
You say, you say what, uh, Mr. Simpson, what, I'm bringing it to?
The expungement, how much more?
I think we, I think it was like forty-five hundred. I'm gonna send you the information, because I actually had a, uh, I had this, I had to break down all the expenses that we did. I'll send it to you, but I think it was forty-five hundred dollars.
All right, so I mean, I was able, I was able to get. Forty-five hundred here?
Yeah, put forty-five hundred there, and I'm gonna give you the number that we had for last year. A lot of the stuff I was able to get, some stuff like breakfast I was able to get for free, and we had discounts on DJs, and a lot of people volunteered at times, so, yeah, just put forty-five hundred.
No problem.
Yeah, because it didn't.
All right. Okay, um, I didn't have a question. This is, oh, never mind. I, I guess I'll probably get that answered on the next. No, I think that's fine. All right, any other questions on the legislative budget? Here now, let's move on to the final one, the executive budget. Okay. Any questions on the executive budget? Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry. Um, I have a question concerning the, um, conferences and, uh, not con, you know, it's under conferences and training. Uh, the executive budget shows a PG-CMA conference of five hundred dollars. Uh, and then there's, it's not on the legislative. I don't see, I, 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 I'm concerned about that, because I don't remember doing a PG-CMA conference. Does, uh, um, Councilwoman Fareed, I'm not Fareed, uh, Ferguson, do you remember a PG-CMA conference?
No. I do not.
Okay, so I, I don't remember that. I don't know, you know, maybe we can get clarity on, from the executive office as to what, what that, uh, information on that conference?
Uh, but, that's, that's fine, um, the mayor's not on this call. Um, but either way, I was going to suggest that the budget remains the same for twenty twenty-four. Um, the conference and training budget for the executive office doubled. Um, I think where we set up last year is that, you know, elected officials get five thousand dollars on conferences and training. That's across the board, so, um, that's that. And then last year, we also uh, settled on the twelve hundred dollars for the membership dues. I think that should remain the same as the twenty twenty-four level. Um, so with that, I think that will answer your question or alleviate any questions related to the PG-CMA.
Okay, and then the, uh, special events.
So some of these are redundant. Um, I, 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 I agree that we can all collaborate. I don't think this, I don't think that the events that the council are throwing aren't, uh, you know, I guess exclusive to council. Um, I think that if we want to throw it on the, the mayor's, more than welcome to participate in a back-to-school event. Uh, participate in a Black History event, um, participate in a Veterans event, um, things like that. But I, again, she's not here to the to vouch for the amounts in here, so I don't, I can't speak to all of that.
Thank you, Council President. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. As far as the special events, we, we're just gonna, uh, like you said, the back-to-school event will just, it'll be inclu, inclusive of what the Legislative, uh, Department is doing, and, uh, the Black History event. So, I, either we're gonna cut the, uh, the, uh, cost, or we're gonna leave it as is?
Oh, I was, my suggestion was to leave the, the budget level as the same as twenty twenty-four.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, as far as the events, um, I'm saying like the back-to-school event, I think is redundant, um, for, you know, to have two back-to-school events. Um, I know that the, the back-to-school event originally, uh, came to, in the council, um, with, uh, council members Fareed and, um, Guillaume. And so, I mean, I, I think it's ridiculous, you know, to have two back-to-school events. Um, giving out book bags and things like that. And, um, the other, um, uh, events, um, yeah, I wish she was here to, uh, here's a holiday of mental health. I mean, I don't, I don't know what dates they are, or when they, when, you know, when she's having them, or anything like that. But definitely, I, 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 um, disagree with having, um, both, you know, uh, the council and the, um, executive having, um, back-to-school events. That, that, and then I agree with you with the, um, she should just have, you know, five thousand dollars for her training, um, the twelve hundred, yeah, going back to, um, that. The other thing is, I'm seeing where, um, she has community, um, um, promotion outreach, and she's talking about, uh, pens and pencils and shirts and things like that, um. It seemed like it was taken out in twenty-three. And if they didn't put back in twenty, uh, so, okay.
Yeah, it was put back in twenty-four, but nothing's been spent against it.
Okay, and the other thing was, um, discretionary, a discretionary fund?
Yes.
Um, she has, she put it up to seven hundred. I think it should be the same as the council. Because when you look at, when you look in, um, you look in community promotion outreach, she has pens and pencils, T-shirts, you know, shirts. But then when you look down here, in, uh, general expenses, and she had, uh, mayor discretionary, um, fund registration, and she said she has buttons and pens and shirts and polos and stuff like that. So, I mean, I, I, I don't understand, um, you know, her, I mean, unless it's something different with the pens and the pencils and the shirts, she has it in two categories.
Okay.
Um, that would be it, okay, um, yeah.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Thank you, Council President. This, apologies if this was already stated, but this is for, um, Mr. Stewart. So, just so I'm reading it correctly, we have, as far as fiscal year twenty-four, I'm looking at the memberships and dues line item. We had twelve hundred dollars in the budget, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
And zero dollars was used, is that also correct?
Exactly. We don't have any spending on that line, true to me.
Yeah, so for me, where I'm confused at is if we have twelve hundred dollars allocated and zero dollars was used, then why are we almost, what, it's almost four times the amount? Um, well, almost three times the amount, in, in, uh, three times increase. Three to four, yeah, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, we'll get. So, I don't understand, if we use zero dollars, why are we increasing it? As opposed to decreasing it or keeping it the same?
As you can see, some of the memberships that she wants to be a part of, it's listed there. And that's why we came up to that amount. Now, are we saying that the mayor, um, shouldn't be a part of these, um, these memberships, these associations?
Oh, no, not at all, not at all. So are these, I guess my question is, are these new memberships? Like, were these not here last year?
Those memberships, no. Well, those organizations were there. She was only restricted to twelve hundred, but she did not use it to, um.
And, and that's what I'm saying. So, so my thing is, I'm not saying that she can't use these things. What I'm saying is if she was given twelve hundred and she chose not to use it, then why are we increasing the number for line item that she refused to choose to get funding from? You get what I mean?
Exactly.
So, so for me, I would not, it, just for me, like, if, if you had twelve hundred, you didn't use it, I'm not gonna offer you forty-five hundred. Because this is gonna be a line item that's being held up. I would probably keep it my, I would probably keep it twelve hundred, or I would probably keep it to the amount, give or take, that she used. I don't see anything in the actuals yet, but if she didn't use anything, that's her choice. So I would, I would personally just make it twelve hundred again or less.
Okay. It, it. Is there any opposition to just making the level of twenty twenty-four? Based on the arguments that several council members have raised?
Well, Mr. President, may I?
Uh, if, if it's on this, yes.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it's on this, because I, 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 and I'm, I'm gonna ask the treasurer. So, we already are members of, aren't we a member of PCCMA? We've already paid those, we paid those dues, right?
Um, what we pay for is the MML, um, the PCCMA, uh, which I think is Prince George's County Mayor's Association. Um, I think that's why she wants that to be there.
No, it's Prince George's County Municipal, Municipal.
Yeah, we, we are members of that already. We pay that every year.
Mm-hmm.
And we're also members of, um, and I think the ICMA is really for the city manager, and I thought we paid those dues, too. We've already paid that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we also pay National League of Cities. We get an invoice, we get an invoice for that every year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so a lot of these in here, we're already members of, only ones we're not, it was probably, uh, the Maryland Black Mayors, the National Council of Mayors, and the Maryland Mayors Association. MML, we're already a member of that.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why, um, it was at twelve hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm. So this is for the Maryland Black Mayors Association, then we have
National Council of Mayors.
National Council of Mayors.
And the Maryland Mayors Association.
Okay.
We're already members of all those other ones. So I might have to go up a little bit to cover those, maybe those, uh, if we wanna, if we wanna, if we wanted to have those.
So this is two thousand, two hundred dollars. No, two thousand dollars.
Are you done? Uh, oh, oh, uh, oh, this on the same topic, so. Um, so I hear you, Councilman Herring. Um, I don't agree. I think the twelve hun, I think, uh, we're going through the same thing we did last year, figuring out that a lot of stuff that was in the budget, we already paid for, so we didn't need it. Um, just like we have for the events, yeah, five thousand dollars. All right, so it's up to us to figure out what the event, not, not events, I'm sorry, conferences. Uh, up to us, what conference we're gonna go through to and not go over that five thousand dollars. Same for memberships, twelve hundred dollars. Figure out what you're gonna be a part of, because you can't do everything. Um, and so it'll, it'd be incumbent upon her to say that, does she want to be a part of Maryland Black Mayors, uh, the National Council of Mayors, or the Maryland Mayors Association? Um, you know, I, I guess it'll just be up to, to her on that.
Well, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess me, every mayor has been a part of those three organizations that have been mayor. And I just don't wanna hear down the, you know, too much down the line. They, they won't let me do this, they won't let me do this. I gotta pay for it out of my pocket, man. Man, clearly we allocated the money last year, and she didn't spend it. She chooses to pay it out of her pocket. You know, um, we put it there, she chooses to pay it out of her car, pocket and run around and say that we didn't. Um, that's, that's, you know, I mean, it just shows you what she's gonna do. But I guess also, um, you know, I'm gonna just tell you, me personally, with the special event, I don't know what we're gonna do with special events. I'm gonna leave it there, we're gonna move to administration. Because I'm gonna tell you this, as long as she got that nonprofit out there, I have a very, I feel very uneasy about putting money out here for special events.
I completely understand. We understand. Sorry about that, Vice President Ferguson. Hmm, Vice President Ferguson?
Oh, yeah, I was just, I was just gonna say, too, um, I mean, just for clarity, so when you were saying, um, just let her pick from her, um, the training, or the, uh, training and or conferences that she wanna go to, um, did, so you're saying just leave all that in there? I mean, because I, if, I, I'm not, I'm understanding that, uh, Councilman Herring has said time and time again at different meetings that MML is paid, you know, it, it, you know, so, I mean, I'm not understanding why she has that in there, um, for her, uh, membership. Um, that she's paying nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for membership. Um, National League of Cities is what, twelve hundred? I mean, so if she wanted to go there, she wouldn't even have enough money. If she just chose that by herself, she wouldn't have enough money if she had twelve hundred. But I just don't wanna hear her saying this in there, but then she can't go. I mean, why is she listing the MML membership dues? And she's been told time and time again that, that we don't pay for that, uh, the legislature or, um, um, executive office. So it shouldn't be, it shouldn't even be there. To me, it's just to hike up the, the, the amount. So, um, my question is, are we gonna leave it in there after she's been told several times that, you know, we don't have to, uh, I think it's paid, we're, it's paid, um, from, uh, uh, Mr. Stewart?
The MML, um, I think we're paying it from the general operations, because it's covering the city in general.
Right, so it shouldn't be, it should not even be listed there. Uh, and I'm suggesting to take it out, because, um, and that's almost a thousand dollars, boosting up that figure. And I'm, I'm almost with, with, uh, Councilwoman, um, yeah, yeah, she didn't spend it, then, you, you know, how in the world is it gonna go from not spending anything to, to increasing it?
Yeah.
That's, that's my, um, and then, of course, the, um, events again. Um, I'm concerned, too, because like most of the events that she have, a lot of these I've never heard of, um, and then some of them, she had, um, before, and she doesn't have it on the property. She has it, you know, in the city at the, at the rec, but if there's no reason why she can't schedule her meet, her, um, events in the municipal center. Um, if they are, um, budgeted events. And that's a concern of mine, so, um, I would suggest the move it in an admin. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Um, so just to cap off, um, what I was saying, uh, particularly as relates to, uh, I, I guess I'm echoing what everybody else is saying. It's that I'm hesitant to raise anything if she didn't use anything. Um, and, you know, if we need to save money in the budget, then if she didn't use it, then why would we increase it? Um, the other thing is, um, I agree that if there are Um, the other thing is, um, I agree that if there are gonna be special events, that's fine, we'll just we will house it in the administration budget, which we did last year, um, and, but unfortunately, when we budgeted for that and gave the mayor the funds to do certain things, at the last minute, she decided that she didn't wanna do them, and left the administration holding the bag to try to create an event that they did not know that they're gonna create. So if that's gonna be the case, then I'd rather not have, I, I'd rather not even move the, eh, special events anywhere. I, I would propose keeping the budget level as the same as twenty twenty-four. I think that that's fair. I think that looking at the actuals, she hasn't used much. And so there's no, in my opinion, justification to increase it if she hasn't used it. So, that's where I land. That's my full explanation. Uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Also, I, um, wanted to suggest, in the event that, um, it is decided to move her events underneath the, um, administration, that there be a, a bullet or a star or some kind of footnote on both the, um, executive, um, page and the administrative page saying, I mean, clearly stating that the budget, you know, why is it over there, that she has access to it? And that, you know, her total budget is hypothetically twenty-seven thousand, so, you know, whatever, for, 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 for this, um, year. And she has access to it and she's, she's able to, um, to use it, so that you know, in, in the event that if it is moved over there, she wants to say, cuz in her eyes, if it's not under her, under her, her, um, office, then she doesn't have it. But if it's listed there, and it's voted in, it's saying that contrary, you can just say, look at the footnote on both, both of those pages, that she has the full budget, but it's being supervised. I mean, terminology can be as, you know, you know, uh, sploosed up, but nonetheless, so that if it's sent somewhere to the page, they can see, um, that she has that. Um, and it's not taken away from her, she has access, so she just gotta act, you know, go in and withdraw from it, just like she would at, at a bank account or something. Thank you.
Okay. That's fine, I, I, I'm fine with that. I just don't know, I don't know what community welcome fall program is. For thirty-five hundred dollars. I don't know what, um, ready for the summer wellness and May Day is for four thousand dollars. She's not here to explain what it is for us to even include it in the budget for another department. I agree that we have the back school event that, you know, we can kinda, um, wash out. Um, Black History, we could wash out. I don't know what Multicultural Day is. So I, we just have to make a decision on it. I've made my proposal to keep it at the twenty twenty-four level. Um, if anybody else has a proposal, that's fine.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Councilman Harry.
Just for the record, the mayor knew about this meeting, is she on vacation or what? What is she, is she, I'm just wanna know, just, I don't want her coming back saying we had a meeting, that she didn't know anything about it.
No, she knew about the meeting, everybody knew about the meeting.
No, I just wanna, I just wanna, just for the record, cuz you know how I get. Make sure that's on the record, that she didn't know about the meeting, so.
Everybody know about the meeting, and she, if you recall, at the last meeting, she tried then and said, and accused us of not having, of not going over the executive budget, and I said that that was not on the agenda. That's on agenda for Monday, July eighth, our next meeting, uh, and that's why we did not go over the executive budget last meeting, because we broke it up, so we wouldn't have a very long meeting. I stated that to her at the last meeting, so she knew even before then, but she was gonna read, she knew before then that there were going to be, um, budget meetings for the executive budget, and she's not here.
Okay, just wanted, just wanted to on the record. Okay, thank you.
Is any opposition for, uh, the executive budget staying at the same level as twenty twenty-four? Harry None, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Simpson, if you could. Okay.
I think twenty twenty-four, that's the answer, she had the backpack stuff in her budget.
No, 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 I'm talking about the executive budget, there's, there's nothing on the events line for the executive budget. For twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and so that means it's transferred over to admin?
No, I, I've, I don't have any, and, and, and you guys can chime in on this, I don't have any, um, motivation to transfer it to any other department, because we transferred it and she did not participate in it last year. So if, for all of her things that she wanted to do last year, we created a budget for it, and we put it in administrative budget, she could have used it, she chose not to use it. And then, when we had the, um, the things that we did have, uh, like Polar Express, when we tried to look to her to conduct these events, he didn't wanna have anything to do with it. So, if we're just gonna move this amount to another um, department, just for her to do the exact same thing that she did to administration last year and hold them, uh, leave them holding the bag, we're trying to plan these events, when they're trying to do other stuff, like do their jobs and, um, you know, implement legislation, things like that, then, for me, I don't have any motivation to, to move it. Now, it, now, if she had in this year used the budget that we provided for her, for her events, then I could say, okay, cool, let's move it over to the, to the department so she can use it, but she didn't. So if she's not gonna use it, then that's eighteen thousand dollars that we could cut. Does that make sense, Vice President Ferguson?
I, I got, I mean, I'm still confused. Um, I heard most of it, but I mean, just for clarity, you're saying that when, when we voted, um, the budget and there was no special events?
Not in the executive budget, no.
But you said, but you're saying also not to put it in administration either, so she just won't handle events, period?
And I mean, she's not here for me to ask what the multicultural day is, maybe if she comes back before we finalize the budget, she could come back and explain some of these things and
Man, she, she, I mean, we, I mean, she had a, a mayor, um, multicultural, DIA, um, Mother's Day tea, um, but, um, the, the biggest name on, on the fly was her company's name. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Councilwoman Gail?
Thank you, Council President. Can you hear me, just to be clear? Can you hear?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, what, what I wanted to ask was, this is staying on the special events line item section for, um, for a moment. The, currently in the administrations, do we have any special events listed? Is there a line item for administration?
No, we don't, we do not.
Okay, so I, I, so I would propose, because we, the administration will be holding events, right? I mean, she left them holding the bag, but I, I do propose what I believe was council vice president stated initially, which was like, if we just put a line item for special events on the administration line item, uh, under the administration, with a caveat that we're very clear that these are, you, this is just for, um, oh gosh, what is it? I forget the word, but accountability purposes, the mayor's events or the administration events will be listed under here. You know, just for me, for me, that just makes more sense, because it, what will happen is, it'll just come off like only the city council does events. And the city itself isn't doing events, um, city meaning administrations side or executive office. And I do think that, um, the word that I was looking for was oversight, that's what it was, not accountability, oversight. I do think that this also raises the, the awareness that, I believe Councilman Herring had mentioned or others, where a lot of the events that have been held thus far, that came from the executive side, it showed, and this is from a lot of citizens as well, it showed a lot of people who are not Glen Arden residents, um, benefiting from said activities. So right now, being that we have activities or a budget line item, put it under the administration side, knowing that we'll be providing oversight to whatever events the mayor will try to host, I feel like that'll be an extra level of security and benefit for the citizens. And if she doesn't use it, she can't say that there was no money for her to pull from. That's just my two cents.
Okay, uh, and what amount?
What, do we have an amount that we had last year for the special events line item?
I don't know, just adding up.
For administration, yeah, cuz I know, uh, we're looking at her executive, but I know last year we moved it, we had special events in the executive line item, I mean, I'm sorry, in the administrative line item, just so they can provide oversight. And she chose not to use anything from that, so I, I don't know if Mr. Stewart, if you would happen to have that amount or not, but if we can probably, um, pin that, like whatever that amount was, and that will just be there.
Would you be opposed to just us having what she has here? Because it, it was, what it was, was whatever she had here, we moved there.
Oh, so no, so no, uh, well, only oppose with, given that there are certain events that I believe are duplicative, right? Like, so I think there, you know, so take that, so, so it'd be less than eighteen thousand, because she has back to school and all these other things in there, so minus that, I, 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 um, I would be fine with that, and I just wanna go on record and say that for the membership and conference, I'm being generous by saying twelve thousand, I wanna be very clear. Because my, I really would like, if you didn't use it, then why is it even here? If you made a choice to not even use it. So I just wanna go on record and say that, that I will, my, I will only, my, if there's consensus being asked for the membership and dues line item, I would own, the max is twelve hundred or less, for me.
Okay. All right.
And again, not that you ask, I just beat you to the punch in case you ask, so.
All right, uh, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, um, President Curtis, so what I was looking at for the membership and dues, I was looking at these three, the Maryland Black Mayors Association, the, um, National Council on Mayors, and the Maryland Mayors Association, those three, um, I believe would be a good, um, step for her, which is approximately fifteen hundred dollars. So I would recommend that we have her have a budget of fifteen hundred to do memberships and dues.
Vice President Ferguson?
Well, I wasn't raising my hand for that, but, um, okay, and then she will automatically be going to MML as well, right? Because that dues are paid.
Correct.
So I mean, that's, I don't know. So she has, um, the amount of due, um, membership, um, her membership. I think it's, um, yeah, I mean, everything else can come out, but I mean, I don't know whether she, it should be twelve hundred. I mean, I don't know why it has to be fifteen hundred. She just picked what she picked. I mean, we, we have five thousand dollars, we have to pick what we have to pick. And the other, yeah, and so, um, cuz the MML, I know that's something definitely that she, she likes to attend, so that's there. So then, it don't have to be in, in, in her budget, because it's already paid for, so that would be a given for her, that's, that she likes to attend both fall and, uh, summer. So I'm, I, I mean, I guess it's just three hundred more dollars, so, I, I mean, I guess you can take a consensus or just go, it doesn't matter at this point, but I just think that, um, if she didn't use it, twelve hundred, you know, she, I mean, she could just give zero dollars, cuz she didn't use it, so twelve hundred is better than nothing. And the other thing I had to say was, again, back to, to her, to the event, um, the duplicate events, I think that, I mean, we've had, um, it's, uh, to have these same events, there, there were one or two events that we had, um, that she had on the same day. Collect the backpack, oh, oh, I mean, it may have been Easter, or Easter egg or whatever, but she had on the same day, and that's splitting city, and of course, most of the people that were there were not people from Glen Arden, but I mean, that is so, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't like that, when we have, you know, so we have a backpack, and then we have, uh, Black History, so I mean, I don't know whether they'll fall on the same weekend day or whatever, but to have two uh, of the same, uh, similar, um, events in the same, in the city, literally, you can jump across the street and be there. I mean, that doesn't show, I mean, that's, that's terrible. That's, that, that doesn't look good at all, and it's, and again, if it's in the budget, is this, uh, it's a waste. You know, if she wants to join, she could join, it, it, it's a doubt, but that's another concern that I have, having, um, the same events, having, uh, events on the same day, or just another event. We might have an event. I mean, I think it was a couple times, I think we had, um, the cancer, um, and she was participating somewhere else, and, and, and so we just need to, um, watch that as well, because um, it's, it's the money that she uses, um, taxpayers' money, this is, that's not good.
So we'll keep her events minus the duplicate, duplicate, uh, kid events, which will lower the special events to twelve thousand five hundred. The twelve thousand five hundred be for everything except the back to school event and the Black History event. Um, and everything else will remain the same for twenty twenty-four. Uh, with us putting in the special events line, Mr. Stewart, that, um, the special events for the Community Fall Program, Mental Health and Wellness Day, the Multicultural Day, and the Ready for Summer Wellness Day is going to be outlined in the administrative budget. So it's any opposition to that from the council members? Along the footnote, so again, the number's gonna be exactly from twenty twenty-four. There's gonna be a footnote stating that the special events that the mayor wants to do is gonna be funded via the administration budget, will outline it, as she has it in here, for the Community Welcome Fall Program, the Mental Health and Wellness Event, the Multicultural Day, and the Ready for Summer Wellness and May Day. Those are the four events. All right?
Got it.
Okay. So the executive budget should be ten thousand three hundred fifty dollars, and the administration budget should increase in, in the special events line by
Well, five hundred.
Five thousand five hundred, thank you, sir. All right. Are they got a question to relate to executive budget? Okay, Harry None, um, the time is nine oh one, the council want to, um, I'm sorry, the council want to, uh, adjourn to a closed session to discuss salaries, so they want to adjourn altogether and create another meeting for salaries.
Mr. President, I think we should adjourn and create another meeting. Actually, actually, we still wanna go to revenue too, cuz there's some revenue numbers I need explained to me.
Okay, so we're gonna have a third, so we're gonna have a third meeting, where we're going to have Mr. Stewart go through, make all the changes that we, um, committed to. Uh, he will reproduce the budget, uh, and then we'll go over the, some of the, uh, have another meeting to go over the changes. Um, any revenue questions you have, Mr., Mr., uh, Councilman Herring? And then adjourn to closed session to discuss salaries. Is that fine?
Yep, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, any final comments from council members? Okay, any final comments from council members? Uh, picking the day for this next meeting?
Why are you doing that, Mr. President? Can I ask, uh, Mr. Stewart, did you get my email? I just sent.
Um, the email about, oh, you sent an email just now?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Let me see. Got it, yes.
Okay, alright. That's expenses, expenses, alright.
Yes.
Um, are we all okay with meeting a week from now on Monday? Or Tuesday? Tuesday? No, I think Monday should be.
Is that the sixteenth?
Monday or Tuesday, the fifteenth or the sixteen? I would go with Tuesday, the, the sixteenth. At six thirty? Any members cannot make that meeting? Okay, Mr. Stewart, does that give you enough time?
I should be enough. I'll try to get everything back to the council by Friday. So that you have the weekend to look over it.
Alright, that'll be great. So Tuesday, the sixteenth at six thirty PM. Will be our next meeting. Alright.
Um, Mr. Uh, Curtis, um, if anyone should have any questions about anything or concerns. Um, you could reach back to me on the Monday, so if if we need to change anything, we can, okay?
Okay. Alright, Tuesday, the sixteenth at six thirty. Uh, thank you very much. The time is nine oh four. And this meeting is now. Adjourned.
Alright, everyone have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Good night.
Good evening.
Good evening.